All right, if we could just get everyone to quiet down. And just before we start, if everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer. And today is the anniversary of the passing of Alderman Cotto's mother, Rosemarie Figueroa. So if you'd please keep her and the family in your prayers this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you can all be seated. Before we start with our organizational meeting tonight, we do have to swear in the city clerk and the city sheriff. So to take care of that order of business, Attorney Matthew Vacarelli and probate judge -elect Matthew Vacarelli is going to administer the oath of office to our city clerk.
You, Michael J. Dalton, having been elected city clerk of the City of Waterbury, do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut so long as you continue a citizen thereof; that you are not subject to any of the disqualifications from holding said office enumerated in the Charter of the City; and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of your skill and ability, so help you God.
And then the next order would be to swear in Stephen Conway, our city sheriff. And to swear him in will be Thomas Conway Jr., his brother.
I am the city sheriff of the City of Waterbury, do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut so long as you continue a citizen thereof; that you are not subject to any of the disqualifications from holding said office enumerated in the Charter of the City; and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of your skill and ability, so help you God.
Recognizing there is a quorum, I hereby call the organizational meeting of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Waterbury on December 1st, 2017 to order. If we could please rise, and we've already done the pledge and the silent prayer. So now, the elected alderman, would you please stand? Give me your right hand. You, Ernest Bernelli, Mary Grace Cavallo, Brenda Cato, Michael Dijo Vincarlo, Christian Dorso, Stephen Giacome, Gregory Hadley, Victor Lopez, Vernon Matthew Jr., Sandra Martinez-McCarthy, Ron Napoli Jr., George Nujame, Roger Sherman Jr., Paul Pineruski Jr. Having been elected to the Board of Aldermen of the City of Waterbury, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut so long as you continue a citizen thereof; that you are not subject to any of the disqualifications from holding said office enumerated in the Charter of the City; and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of your skill and ability, so help you God. Congratulations. I would now entertain a motion from the Board to elect a temporary president for the purpose of electing a permanent president for the Honorable Board. The clerk recognizes Alderman Martinez-McCarthy for the purpose of a nomination.
Mr. Clerk, honorable members of the Board, it's both an honor and a privilege to place into nomination the name of Alderman Greg Hadley as temporary president.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Being there are no further nominations, may I have a motion to close the nominations for the position of temporary president of the Board of Aldermen?
I move to close nominations. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. We now have before the Board our nomination for the position of temporary president. May I have a motion to approve Alderman Hadley as the temporary president?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Hadley, please come forward and assume the role as temporary president of the Board of Aldermen.
Honorable members of the Board of Aldermen, this matter now is to elect the president of the Board of Aldermen, Alderman Bernelli.
Mr. President, honorable members of this Board, it is both an honor and a privilege to place into nomination the name of Alderman Paul Pineruski as president.
We have a nomination of Alderman Paul Pineruski as president. Do I have a second, Alderman Lopez?
Second.
We have a nomination that... and a second. Are there any other nominations? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my honor and a privilege to place into nomination Alderman Steve Giacome for president of the Board of Aldermen.
We have another nomination of Alderman Steve Giacome, and it has been seconded. Has it been seconded? It has been? It has been seconded. Got it. Any discussion? We have a nomination for Paul Pineruski. We'll take that nomination first. And I need a second or a motion to approve Alderman Pineruski.
Second.
We have a second. We need to do a roll call. When you do the roll call, please say the name who you're voting for.
I move to close nominations.
Nominations are closed. We will now have a roll call.
You will say the name, you know, when you vote. Ernest Bernelli.
Paul Pineruski.
Mary Grace Cavallo.
Brenda Cato.
Paul Pineruski.
Michael Dijo Vincarlo.
Paul Pineruski.
Christian Dorso.
Paul Pineruski.
Steve Giacome.
Steve Giacome.
Gregory Hadley.
Paul Pineruski.
Victor Lopez.
Paul Pineruski.
Vernon Matthews.
Steve Giacome.
Sandra Martinez-McCarthy.
Paul Pineruski.
Ron Napoli Jr.
Paul Pineruski.
George Nujame.
Steve Giacome.
Roger Sherman.
Steve Giacome.
Paul Pineruski.
Paul Pineruski.
Nine for Pineruski, five for Giacome. Pineruski has it.
Motion carries for Paul Pineruski as president. Please come forward and assume the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk and honorable members of the Board of Aldermen. Just for the record, we should have noted earlier, Alderman Kula is not with us this evening because he is on his honeymoon. He got married earlier this summer and put off his honeymoon, and he gets back tomorrow. So we'll swear him in once he's back here. The next item before this board is the election of a president pro temp for the Board of Aldermen. And the chair would recognize Alderman Dijo Vincarlo for the purpose of a nomination.
Mr. President, honorable members of this board, it is both an honor and a privilege to place into nomination the name of Alderman Ronald Napoli Jr. as president pro temp.
I second that nomination.
The motion having been made and seconded for Alderman Napoli, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a motion to close nominations?
I move to close nominations.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The nominations are closed. The business now before this board is the election of Alderman Ron Napoli Jr. as president pro temp of the Board of Aldermen. May I have a motion to approve Alderman Napoli Jr. as president pro temp?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Lopez and seconded by Alderman Dorso, is there any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. A yes vote will be to approve Alderman Napoli and no vote to disapprove.
Alderman Bernelli.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo.
Yes.
Alderman Cato.
Yes.
Alderman Dijo Vincarlo.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Giacome.
Yes.
Alderman Hadley.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Matthews.
Yes.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Napoli.
Yes.
Alderman Nujame.
Yes.
Alderman Sherman.
Yes.
Alderman Pineruski.
Yes.
We have fourteen approved.
The motion carries and congratulations to Alderman Napoli. The matter now before this board is the election of a majority leader of the Board of Aldermen, and the chair recognizes Alderman Dorso for that purpose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Honorable members of this board, it's both an honor and a privilege to place into nomination the name of Alderman Ernie Bernelli as majority leader.
We have a nomination of Alderman Ernie Bernelli as majority leader. Do I have a second?
I second that nomination.
Seconded by Alderman Napoli. We have a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, is there a motion to close nominations?
I move to close nominations.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The nominations are closed. The business now before this board is the election of Alderman Ernie Bernelli as majority leader of the Board of Aldermen. May I have a motion to approve Alderman Bernelli as majority leader?
So moved. Second.
Made by Alderman Lopez, seconded by Alderman Dorso. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, if you'd please call the role of the Democratic Caucus.
Ernest Bernelli.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo.
Yes.
Just a Democrat, Mike.
Democrats?
Just a Democrat.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, Alderman Bernelli.
Yes.
Alderman Cato.
Yes.
Alderman Dijo Vincarlo.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Hadley.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Napoli.
Yes.
Alderman Pineruski.
Yes.
Nine approved.
The motion carries. Alderman Bernelli is elected as the majority leader. Congratulations. The business now before this board is the election of a minority leader for the Board of Aldermen, and the chair recognizes Alderman Roger Sherman for the purpose of a nomination.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of this board. It is both an honor and a privilege to put forth Alderman Steve Giacome for the minority leader of this board.
Motion having been made, the chair would recognize Alderman Nujame.
I second that nomination.
Motion having been made and seconded, are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, can I have a motion to close nominations?
So made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, the... all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The nominations are closed. The business before this board now is the election of Alderman Stephen Giacome as minority leader of the Board of Aldermen. May I have a motion to approve Alderman Giacome?
Motion to approve Alderman Giacome as minority leader.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, Mr. Clerk, if you'd please call the role of the Republican Caucus.
Alderman Cavallo.
Yes.
Alderman Giacome.
Yes.
Alderman Matthews.
Yes.
Alderman Nujame.
Yes.
Alderman Sherman.
Yes.
Five approved.
The motion carries and Alderman Giacome is elected as the minority leader. The next item before this board is the adoption of the rules for the upcoming term, and the chair would recognize the majority leader, Alderman Bernelli, for a motion to adopt.
Mr. President, I move the adoption of the rules as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, the motion now before this board is the adoption of the rules for the upcoming term. Mr. Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Alderman Bernelli.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo.
Yes.
Alderman Cato.
Yes.
Alderman Dijo Vincarlo.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Giacome.
Yes.
Alderman Hadley.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Matthews.
Yes.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Napoli.
Yes.
Alderman Nujame.
Yes.
Alderman Sherman.
Yes.
Alderman Pineruski.
Yes.
Fourteen approved.
The motion carries, the rules are adopted. At this point, is there any other business to come before this board? With that, I would just like to congratulate all of you and wish... welcome the new alderman to the board. I look forward to working with all of you. We may have a tough year ahead of us, depending on how the state finances go, but I know working together, we can all continue to move Waterbury forward and make this the place that we all know that it can be. Before we adjourn, I would also note that the Board of Education will be having their organizational meeting immediately following, so we need to vacate these seats so they can use this area. But I'd ask all of the aldermen to take the front row and whatever other space is available. They should be done in about half an hour, and please stay for their organizational meeting. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
All right, let's get this show on the road here, folks. Can everyone take their seats? All right, we ready to go? I hereby call the Board of Education's inaugural meeting of December 1st, 2017 to order. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Michael Dahl.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call upon city clerk Michael J. Dalton to administer the oath of office to the Board of Education-elect Karen Harvey, Juanita Hernandez, Melissa Serrano Adorno, Charles Stango, and Thomas Van Stone.
Okay, if you would stand, please. You, having been chosen or elected commissioners to the Board of Education of the City of Waterbury, do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut so long as you continue a citizen thereof; that you are not subject to any of the disqualifications from holding said office enumerated in the Charter of the City; and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of your skill and ability, so help you God. Congratulations.
City clerk Dalton, please call the roll.
Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno.
Here.
Commissioner Stango. Commissioner Sweeney.
Here.
Commissioner Theralt.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone.
Present.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone.
Present.
And Mayor O'Larry.
Present.
Eleven present.
Thank you, sir. You know, I've never sat in this chair. I'm not sure I know what to do. It's a good thing I have my notes. I'll now ask for nominations for the election of a temporary president of the Board of Education. Commissioner Charles Stango.
I am the mayor. If that is of this board, it might be put into nomination the name of Commissioner Ann Sweeney as temporary president.
I second that nomination.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded for the election of Commissioner Ann Sweeney as temporary president. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no further nominations, may I have a motion to close the nominations? Commissioner Stango?
I will close nominations.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. May I have a motion to approve Commissioner Sweeney as temporary president?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Commissioner Sweeney. You are the temporary president. Please assume the chair.
There's the button right behind there. Oh, we're on with the button already?
We're on.
Oh, I thought it had its own button. Sharing my button now. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Honorable members of the Board of Education, the matter now before this board is the election of a permanent president of the Board of Education. The chair recognizes Commissioner Harvey for the purpose of a nomination.
Thank you, Madam President. Honorable members of the Board of Education, it is both an honor and a privilege to place into nomination the name of Commissioner Elizabeth C. Brown as president.
We have a nomination of Commissioner Brown as president. Do I have a second, Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
I second the nomination.
We have a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
I move to close the nominations.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. The business before this board is the election of Elizabeth C. Brown as president of the Board of Education. We will now have a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Wad?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Theralt?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Yes.
Motion carries. President Brown, please come forward and assume the chair. Thank you. The matter now before the board is the election of a vice president. The chair recognizes Commissioner Tom Van Stone for the purpose of the nomination.
Thank you, Madam President. Honorable members of the Board of Education, it is both my honor and privilege to place into nomination the name of Commissioner and my friend Karen Harvey as vice president.
Second. We have a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? May I have a motion to close nominations for vice president?
I move to close the nominations.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. We'll now have a roll call vote for the election of Commissioner Karen Harvey as vice president. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Wad?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
No.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Theralt?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes.
Nine one, motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Vice President Karen Harvey.
Thank you.
The business before this board now is the adoption of bylaws.
Madam President, I move to adopt the bylaws of the Board of Education as presented.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Theralt?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, please. I'd like to just, before we adjourn, I want to just take a moment to thank all of the newly elected officials who are here tonight with us and congratulate them on a very hard campaign for all of you, and especially thank all of your families for the amount of time that you spent away from home working to become an elected official. I'd also like to thank all the incumbent members of both the Board of Aldermen and the Board of Education. It is truly an honor to be the mayor of a city that has so many committed individuals who care so much, not only for their city, but for the diverse population that we have here in the City of Waterbury, recognizing the challenges of an urban city and working together to solve those challenges. I'm very proud of all of you, I really am, and I can't tell you how humble I am to sit up here and look out in this room of committed and dedicated individuals. And, you know, I say this all the time and people laugh, we may not always agree on the issues, but what we always agree on is what is in the best interest of the citizens. the issues, but what we always agree on is what is in the best interest of the City of Waterbury, and I'm really proud of all of you for that. I'm proud to see so many commissioners here, so many city employees here, we have our police chief here, we have our fire chief here. It speaks volumes for the camaraderie and the family that we have here in this city, and I think it speaks, it really does send a message out throughout the rest of the state that we are a very, very strong and united city, and this city, by the way, because of your efforts, is thriving compared to many other cities, not only in Connecticut but across the country. I commend all of you for your efforts. Only one challenge left for Ken Kern and Bill DeMata. We got to figure out how to get people to vote. The dismal turnout this time is embarrassing. I can't believe it, but I think we should call on both the Republican leadership and Democratic leadership of both parties to get together soon and start to discuss ways to attract people back to the voting booth. I think it's absolutely necessary for this city to move forward and stay strong and united, and, you know, I don't know, there's probably a million reasons why people don't vote, and I'm not sure what they are, but I do know one thing, that we need to attract more people to get involved, not only with the government process, but certainly to get them in the voting booths, okay? So thank you all for your time, Madam President.
And thank you, Mayor O'Leary, for all your dedication and hard work, and I just want to recognize Deputy Superintendent Robert Henry is with us this evening, and I think I speak on behalf of the entire board that we look forward to working with you on behalf of our children. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there... All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm not sure who was supposed to say that. I'm not sure who was...